Or Craig? Oh, thank you.
Recording has begun. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig? Does it look like we're still missing some council members?
I'm counting, yes, only three, four.
All right, who just, oh, there's Councilwoman Bryant Ward. And? Councilman, I see Councilman Chollinger, is Councilman Jenkins or Councilman Goldsmith on?
Not as of yet.
Okay. We do have a quorum. So I'm going to start and hopefully they will follow shortly. It could be traffic. I say that, let's see what happens. All right, I'd like to officially call this meeting on November 23rd, 2021 to order at 6:00 PM. If you all would stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, so the first item on our agenda, it's gone, it's a big one, is the minutes. Has council been able to review the minutes? I have one statement before we start asking for approval of minutes. The September 21st minutes were pulled for approval because there was a deficiency noticed by staff and so it will come in front of us and add a future date. With that said, just for the record, if we could go through each individual one so it is stated, you know, I move to approve or not approve August 10th and go through that. Anybody want to challenge themselves today? Oh, Matt, I just saw a no. All right, well.
Madam? I'm happy to do so.
Fantastic.
Okay, let's just see the best way to do this. So I'm gonna go back to the, here we go. So looking at Town Council Work Session for August 10th, 2021 Meeting Minutes, I move that we approve them as written.
And Councilwoman Bryant Ward, you can put all of them in there and if anybody has, you can just read them all off and if anybody has any objections, we can pull it from there, if you're okay with that.
I'm fine with that. I thought you wanted them individually. Okay, so council special meeting, August 11th, 2021 Meeting Minutes, I move that we approve them as written. Town Council Work Session Special Meeting, August 17th, 2021 Meeting Minutes, I move that we accept them as presented. Town Council Meeting, August 24th, 2021 Meeting Minutes, I move that we accept them as presented. Council Special Meeting to Call Closed Session, August 31st, 2021 Meeting Minutes, I move that we accept them as presented. Joint Council and Planning Commission Closed Session, August 31st, 2021 Meeting Minutes, I move that we accept them as presented. Council Special Meeting Minute, Meeting Minutes, September 9th, 2021, I move that we accept them as presented. Town Council Work Session, September 14th, 2021 Meeting Minutes, I move that we accept them as presented. Town Council Work Session Special Meeting, September 21st, should be pulled, okay? Town Council, September 28th, 2021 Meeting Minutes, I move that we accept them as presented. Council Special Meeting, October 7th, 2021 Meeting Minutes, I move that we accept them as presented. Town Council Work Session, October 12th, 2021 Meeting Minutes, I move that we accept them as presented. Town Council Work Session Special Meeting, October 19th, 2021 Meeting Minutes, I move that we accept them as presented. Council Special Meeting, October 22nd, 2021 Meeting Minutes, I move that we accept them as presented. Close, Council Closed Session, October 22nd, 2021 Meeting Minutes, I move that we accept them as presented. Town Council, October 26th, 2021 Meeting Minutes, I move that we accept them as presented.
Fantastic. An excellent job, Councilwoman Bryant Ward. So I have a motion. Do I have a second to accept all of the minutes as presented with the exception of 21 September, which we have pulled?
Your Honor, I'll, or your Honor, one day.
I don't want that.
No, 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 I'm not gonna give that one to you. I'll make a second, I'll make a second to approve of the meeting minutes as presented. Then we'll open it up for discussion. I see Councilman Jenkins just hopped on here.
Yes. All right, so I have a motion and that has been properly seconded. Any discussion?
These, Madam Mayor, I did not see this packet that we had attached those minutes, just for sake of transparency. I know they're available on some portion of the website, but if those that are.
They're attached. They're attached.
No, they're not to the public because they have not been approved and then codified. So when you're going on the website, you can't pull it off. You can only get it through your iPad, so that's where those are. But that is, that's, it will be, once they are approved, if they are approved, they will be open to the public. But thank you for that. I appreciate that.
I see, I see, I see, I see. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yes. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of accepting all the minutes with the exception of 21 September, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. It gets easier, I promise. The next on the agenda is our public hearing. We will have a, I have a little list here. So I would like to call this public hearing to, it's a public hearing on the zoning for the text, zoning text amendment for the hospital campus zone. We do have the applicants online. I'm going to call this, this public hearing to order. The town on the plate of virtual public hearing will be conducted in the following manner. At the discretion of the mayor, speakers may be limited to three minutes. If there's anyone who would like to speak, we ask you to announce your name when joining the virtual meeting and state that you intend to speak. I understand no one has said that yet to the, to Craig or Kelly, but make sure that you keep your phone on mute until you are called to speak. Written documents for the record should. Oh, I'm echoing. I like to hear my voice, but not twice. Written documents for the record should be emailed to the Director of Planning, who will give to me, and there was nothing presented to, to me. So the review of the public notices. Town Manager, will you enter for the record the certificate of publication that the hearing was properly advertised and which Maryland Independent Newspaper it was?
Madam Mayor, I do not have it in front of me, but yeah, I believe it was. Ms. Harrington may have that as part of her file.
Ms. Harrington.
If she does or not.
I do, we definitely did send that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I know we sent it. I just do not have the dates that it was published in front of me.
It was published in the, oh, Lord.
October 8th and October 15th?
That's what I recall. I was gonna double check my email from, because I'm not connected to the network.
I will go on with the procedure and if you could just verify that. Well, I know that they were published, but just for the record, so we can have that. So recommendations. I will let Director Harrington have a summary of the staff report that just has your recommendation.
Yes, so we did take the, where's my meeting now? We're having fun tonight. So we did take this to the Planning Commission for a public hearing. They did not have any comments and they were okay with the proposed zoning category and the proposed changes. I do want to note that I did make an error in my copy that's attached to this agenda. When I put this in ordinance form, I did have a mistake on the parking table where it should, where it currently says one parking space per three licensed beds and one per employee. The way that the text amendment was actually written was one per three licensed beds plus one per each day shift full-time employee. So adding that each day shift full-time employee was the one error that I had in, when I changed this over to ordinance form. I just wanted to make note of that. But otherwise, staff had done a thorough review of this. We did go through this with the Planning Commission. Planning Commission did give it four conditions. One was to remove the fast food, which is a drive-through, from that area, which they did do. And then the other were to provide a buffer yard plan, which as you can see is attached to the agenda. A common sign plan, which was taken to the Design Review Board meeting in October and approved, or I'm sorry, November. You moved the, yes, the November 10th meeting. And then they had design guidelines in accordance with some of the code sections that were taken and approved by the Design Review Board at their November 10th meeting as well. So with that, I will turn that back over and I will continue to try to verify the dates that we published those.
Fantastic. Thank you. Questions by council? Any at this point? You'll have one more opportunity in a second. Go ahead. Oh, yes.
For the record, I would like to note that I am recusing myself from this discussion.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Bryant Ward. Councilman Jenkins, you have a question or a comment?
First, I apologize for being late. I was having technical problems. Operator error on my end, so I apologize for signing in late. My, my question is to Director Harrington. So you are satisfied that they've met the conditions and the buffer yards and all the other requirements?
Yes, that was part of the overall zoning text amendment.
Okay.
With that buffer yard plan, we did take a look at that.
And then I noticed on the, on the draft Hospital Campus Zone map, the draft, I probably asked this before, but I just, I guess, wanted additional clarification. Those properties that are currently zoned residential that are, I guess, adjacent to the, to the public street that comes out onto Charles Street, I mean, those are currently owner-occupied houses or homes right now?
Yes.
So this would, this overlay zone would then incorporate those potential properties as part of the hospital campus?
That is correct, but the underlying zone would still apply. So in this instance, there shouldn't be any issues for the existing homeowners and what they can do with their property. We made sure to take a look at that when we did the purpose and intent section to make that clear. And I also did get verification that we published for the Town Council Public Hearing on the November 12th and 19th, Southern Maryland Independent Editions.
Fantastic. Thank you for.
Thank you. That answered my question. Thank you.
Great. All right, any other questions from council? All right, I will, were there any, for the record, just so we have it on the recording, do we have any written documents that were entered into the record?
No, no.
Okay, are there any speakers that would like to speak tonight on this, at this public hearing about the zoning text amendment for the hospital campus zone?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Steve Scott, on behalf of the applicant. Are you ready for us or were you asking if there are any other public speakers?
Um.
Just to clarify.
You know, if there isn't anybody that's speaking, I don't know if you need to speak. If you'd like to speak, I always welcome you to speak, but.
I think the, that the record speaks for itself. Just a few items to reiterate. This is an implementation of the hospital campus zone as envisioned by the 2020 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. As Director Harrington noted, the Planning Commission has given this its blessing in a unanimous vote and of course staff gives us a positive recommendation. Design Guidelines, Common Sign Plan have been approved by the Design Review Board and you can see those are attached to the, to the ordinance along with the buffer yard plan. And we would very much appreciate a, an adoption so that the hospital can establish a more efficient and sort of cohesive land use of their holdings there. And we're certainly available to answer questions. I think, obviously, we don't want to beat this too much because this is something we've been working on with the town for a long time, several years now.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. And for my two cents that I will put in there, I love the idea of a hospital campus zone for reasons that, when you're trying to promote your anniversaries, that you don't have to come through the Design Review Board. You're, you have tastefully put up signs in the past and, and you are the largest, one of the largest, if not the largest, company here in La Plata and you're not going anywhere and it's nice that you're able to control your own signage and your campus. I really like the sense of place that you are creating as well as the building materials are all going to be the same and I look forward to the expansion that will eventually come, I am sure. So thank you for being very considerate when asking for a hospital campus zone and taking, incorporating everything and Director Harrington did a marvelous job as well. All right, seeing that there are no speakers that have indicated they'd like to speak, any additional questions by council? All right, so I'm seeing that, oh, Councilman Goldsmith, those hands just pop up.
Yeah, I just popped in there. Sorry, I was having technical difficulties as well. When I was reading through the information there and talked about the signage and it indicated that all signs that were non-compliant will become compliant. Do we have any signs that are non-compliant at this point in time?
So, Councilman, we had a technicality and Director Harrington can, can correct me if I misspeak. The signage that exists now was approved as a master sign plan under the old sign ordinance and technically was never approved as a common sign plan under the current sign ordinance. So technically, that was the non-compliance. To my knowledge, there's no other non-compliance on the site.
That is correct. That is a standard language in our common sign plans that we include that if there are any that are non-compliant, they will come into compliance with the common sign plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Great question. All right, seeing that we don't have any more questions and we didn't have anybody write in or speak tonight, I am recommending that we close this hearing and close the, the opportunity, the record, I should say, close the record tonight. And then we vote on whether we accept this zone text amendment. So this meeting will, the special public hearing meeting will be closed at this time at 6:19 PM. Do I have a motion by one of my councilmen to accept the zoning text amendment, hospital campus zone as presented, with the amendment, I should say, with the amendment Director Harrington indicated?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to, to adopt the hospital overlay zone as presented and with amendments?
All right. Thank you very much, Councilman Jenkins. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Great. Thank you, man. Thank you, Councilman Goldsmith. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, there was a.
Go ahead.
You're breaking for it. You got, you're killing me. Mr. Manuel?
I believe we'll also need to amend the, I'm trying to bring it up on my screen right now, but I think this is just more or less.
Are you referring to the dates, Brent?
Yes.
Because I just did that as well, so all of that is fixed.
Okay, so all that's updated. That was part of, so I just wanted to make sure you included that with one amendment. We didn't.
Yep, just for the date of adoption and the one change to the parking table.
All right, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. All right, this is like a suspenseful thing right here. So we have, we have a motion, we have a second, we have some interruptions, we have discussion. Let's take a vote. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you very much. I look forward to seeing all the good things that the hospital continues to do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council. We appreciate all your support.
Give my best to Noel.
Will do.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our next item on the agenda is our public forum. If you would like to speak, we indicate, we ask you to state your name, your address, whether you're in the incorporated town limits and please limit your, your, your talking points to three minutes or less. Do I have anybody that would like to speak this evening?
Would like to speak, Mayor?
Go ahead. The floor is yours.
Mike Ranfola, 113 Morris Drive, within the Incorporated Town Limits. In being given the opportunity to address you this evening, I want to preface my remarks by saying that I applaud the time and effort that this and prior town councils take and have taken to keep our town running smoothly. The varied experiences you bring to the position and the hours devoted to the business of running our town are quite exemplary and greatly appreciated. With few exceptions, I am usually in agreement with the decisions you make. One area in which I take issue with you and prior town council involves large annexations. Why? Because they involve potential permanent town altering and they affect residents long after you left the town council or even our town. For me, this interest began over 30 years ago with the Davis or Heritage Green Annexation that was hotly debated. Finally, the town council voted for this annexation. A hard-fought referendum brought out over 50% of registered voters, which was unheard of, and the annexation was reaffirmed by 87 votes out of a total of 1,182 that were cast. Had 44 people voted the other way, we would not have a heritage green development now occurring, resulting in 3,170 homes and only after several amendments that radically changed the original annexation agreement. What a time-consuming and costly referendum it was. In such a small town as La Plata, I feel issues such as large, permanent town-altering annexations could easily be resolved if residents had the opportunity to express their opinion to the representatives prior to a town council vote. Hence, the non-binding survey with published results prior to a town council vote came to mind. This, I felt, would be to everyone's satisfaction. No one other than Mayor Hale has ever been able to explain town council resistance to this suggestion. His written response bears repeating. Several years ago, prior to the Super Walmart Annexation, I requested a written response to my request to have a non-binding survey of residents on this annexation with published results prior to a town council vote. He felt his written response important enough to have it delivered to my home by the town clerk and read aloud at a town council meeting. Only problem was he read aloud, what he read aloud purposely omitted the following, quote, "You may feel this is non-binding, but once the information is out there and how the number of people responded, it would be difficult to make a non-binding on the council," unquote. How telling was this? My point exactly. Obviously, this is why he purposely omitted this from what he read aloud. When I recommended this prior to the Super Walmart Annexation vote, three of the town council members who voted for it assured me that through telephone calls, emails, and attending neighborhood meetings, they were convinced constituents were supportive of having a Super Walmart. They were proved dead wrong in a needless, expensive referendum costing our residents well over $30,000 by the two-to-one vote. All of this could have been avoided with a non-binding survey with published results prior to the town council vote. Some argue that the public hearing is where people can register their opinion. In theory, yes, but I know from experience the public hearing is nothing more than a legal, formal requirement that doesn't work. Two cases in point. One, the Super Walmart, where the overwhelming majority spoke against at the public hearing, yet resulted in a three-to-two vote for from that town council. Second example is Mallard's Pond LLC, where an entire roomful of residents spoke 100% against, no one spoke for. Still, the town council voted three-to-one in favor of the annexation. I have not seen nor heard one of those residents return to any of our meetings since. How sad. The public hearing doesn't work. The non-binding survey would reveal the consensus of the people responding to all concern. Town council members could still vote as they wish, but why would they vote against their constituents? Aren't they supposed to represent us? So why the resistance to this approach? The petitioners representing the hub have already agreed to this non-binding survey as well as paying all costs.
Five minutes is fast.
Additionally, they have agreed to other commitments as well. Now they are attempting to reneg and weasel out of these concessions. As to whether these commitments were actually made, one need only to interview our former town mayor Hale. Town council members of that time period, our town clerk, the former town manager, Jay Hellman, who made the commitments, or review the recorded town council business meetings from July 2015 through March 7, 2017, as these hub commitments were regularly discussed. For hub petitioners, their attorney, or our current mayor to say this can't be confirmed is rich. At a work session of September 23, 2019, Sue Greer was introduced as a legal representative of the hub petitioners.
Mr. Ranfola, excuse me for one second. Could you wrap it up in about 30 seconds, please? So.
Well, I have two more pages to go. I'm at the bottom of page four. I prepared this, Mayor, as you initially offered me a five-minute. So if you would, I'd like to finish.
And you have exceeded that and I appreciate that, but if you could just highlight the. If you could give me the last, if you could just wrap that up.
I can't, Mayor, I can't take it out of context. Now, I can finish it at the next meeting and have it published in the newspaper or I would rather just finish tonight.
All right, I'll give you two more minutes, okay? Just two, if you could wrap it up, please. Thank you.
All right. At a work session 20, as of September 23, 2019, Sue Greer was introduced as a legal representative of the hub petitioners. Jay Hellman was present for this meeting. When asked to confirm the commitments already made, Ms. Greer claimed she would get back to me, but never did. Two years later, at another work session on September 21, 2021, Ms. Greer claimed she could not confirm that these commitments were ever, ever made. In a word, balderdash. At a business meeting this October 26, 2021, I asked to hear from the town council members to respond to two questions. One, whether we should be doing business with such uns. One, whether we should be doing business with such unscrupulous and dishonest petitioners of the hub. Two, I asked of their feelings regarding the use of the non-binding survey with published results prior to a vote on any hub annexation request. Mayor James ignored my request, rudely proceeded to the next agenda item. Only after I attempted interrupted prior to adjournment and asked again, did she respond that four town council members would need extra time to collect their thoughts. How could she possibly know this? At the November 9, 2021 work session, I again requested to hear from the four town council members. This was their response. Councilman Jenkins, I do not have enough information to respond, and that he supports the annexation procedures already in place. He never responded to what was directly asked. Councilman Goldsmith stated that the annexation procedures don't call for a referendum, and he believes that the council members can determine support or lack thereof from emails, telephone calls, et cetera. This is exactly what the three town council members said when considering the Super Walmart annexation, and were proved wrong by a two to one margin in a needless, expensive referendum. The town has already unnecessarily wasted over $30,000 of residents' money with the Super Walmart referendum. I'm trying to avoid this from happening again by the use of a non-binding survey with published results prior to a town council vote. Councilman Bryant Ward wasn't certain what I wanted and was highly incensed that I would suggest that I would allow others to speak for her. She allowed the mayor to speak for her twice that night and still did not answer my two questions. Councilman Trolinger basically agreed to what everyone else said. Also, he never directly responded to what was asked. I don't even know how to comment on this. So again, tonight, I would like direct responses from our four council members of what I've asked. Should, number one, should the town council entertain any requests from dishonest hub petitioners? Number two, what is your opinion of the non-binding survey with published results prior to a town council vote on a hub annexation request? And I thank you for the extra time.
Thank you very much. If any council member would like to, I know that you've already stated what's in the past, but if you would like to respond to Mr. Runfola, the floor is open. Councilman Jenkins.
I'm still somewhat at a loss to fully understand what, well, let me backtrack a little bit. I guess at this point, I'm a little speechless about the first accusation that we should not do business with, quote, "scurulous" folks who were representing a particular petitioner for an annexation. It's hard for me to respond to that because I don't know whether they're unscrupulous or not. I mean, any any person or group of folks have the right to file a petition for a billing permit or any other process within the town. So I don't know whether we have any legal right to say, well, you can't apply for something because I think I think that maybe you're dishonest. I'm just not sure that's legal to do that. And then number two, about having a non-binding survey prior to any application for annexation. I don't necessarily disagree that at times that the public hearing process is not necessarily the best avenue because my past experiences and other work in other jurisdictions has seen that public hearings do not necessarily bring out everybody, and unfortunately, sometimes they only bring out the folks who are opposed to something. And frankly, the same could be said for a survey. I have seen surveys that are very effective and work. I've seen other surveys that are misleading and sometimes, with all due respect, folks really don't really understand what they're signing. So I'm just not convinced at this point in time that we need to have a non-binding survey for a one particular annexation or even other ones. However, perhaps we can do a better job, this is me speaking, perhaps we can do a better job with respect to public hearing processes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins. Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Runfola, for your background information. And I'll say it again. Initially, I did not know what you were asking. It was not clear to me. I didn't understand it. Now I do understand it. The annexation is a process, is clearly documented what the process is. Having a referendum is not a part of the process, and I'm not going to subjectively add something to it that's not already in place. I am not in favor of stating that someone is dishonest, unscrupulous, that's judgment. I don't know them personally, and I will not be a part of that type of conversation. This is business. It's not personal, and it should never be made to be personal. We will stick with the facts. We will stick with the documentation. The public forum is a part of the process as it stands right now. It's not changed. So if there are people who are opposed to this, they have the opportunity to come and speak for three minutes stating their opposition and getting it on the record. I am not in favor of adding something to an already well-documented process.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bryant Ward. Any other comments? Councilman Trolinger.
Yes, just briefly, Mr. Runfola, thank you for being available today. I know at the last hearing we discussed you bringing some documentation to the table that could show us, because I wasn't part of the prior council, and I know most of us here are not aware of the discussion that was held in which you stated that the hub had committed to a townwide survey, townwide polling instrumentation, that they had already agreed to it. So we asked for some prior documentation of that. I don't think we got that. You must not have been able to access that. And I know you didn't take down my comments from the last meeting accurately either, which I, you know, I appreciate that you took notes, but our process with government is not perfect, of course, but it does take involvement from our residents. There are mechanisms to do that. We have our town email, our town phone numbers published on the website. All of us are very available to residents and are out and in the community. Often, we have commissions that are set aside to discuss these issues, of which people have the ability to participate in. And we welcome feedback from residents, and there's a way to do that. And I don't think the way to do that is to give people a poll or a survey on every item that there is available regarding the annexations. So I think, you know, we would like a little bit more information here, and as to the as to the characterization of Ms. Greer or the hub's representatives, I will say that, you know, I don't think we're called as a body to weigh in on people's dishonesty or truthfulness, but my capacity and knowing Ms. Greer, I don't think she's ever represented anything dishonestly with me yet, but that's not even really the issue. We're presented annexation items as the way it's outlined by the town. So we process them that way, not without regard as to the particular identity of the people presenting them. That's the only way to fairly do it. So if there's something specific that you want us to look at, I think we're all happy to do so. If you can get us some documentation as to a commitment from them in a survey or poll, but I don't know that that would really get at to the heart of your question, which is, is a large annexation a good idea for the town or not on a particular issue?
Thank you, Councilman Trolinger. Councilman Goldsmith.
Yes, I guess I need to weigh in like everyone else does, and I really support the comments made by Mrs. Bryant Ward. We have procedures in place. The annexation, I feel that even if by chance you can go back and document that Mr. Hellman did make a statement of that, I still don't support doing it. I think we, as council, are obligated and charged to determine all the facts, determine all the information, and research it and make, I guess, judgment decisions of what's best for the town. And so that's where I stand. And I guess, bottom line is, even if you find someone that can document it, I still don't support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I have already been on the record as saying that I do not support this procedure, because we do have procedures in place, as well as we were elected by the people to represent the people, and we are going to do the best job that we can. So, Council, you have asked the questions. They've been answered. The issue has been addressed, so I'm hoping that this issue has now found its end and that we can go on to other things that will impact our town. So thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? All right, hearing none, we will go on to our next item on the agenda, which is our department reports. Up first is our police department. Are there any questions? You all should have read the report. Do you have any questions? I believe it's Lieutenant Payne on the call tonight. Does anybody have any questions, Council, for Lieutenant Payne, from the information that you read? Lieutenant Payne, I just have one question, and it's just an observation. Do you think that the increase in collisions, which was very little, but I mean, three out of, it's gone up, do you think that is because school's back in session and/or the time change? Or do you have, it's just fluky? Oh, I think you're unmuted. There you go.
Yeah, I'm unmuted now. I apologize. I was trying to get unmuted. In regarding to the increase in collisions, it could be, it could be many things. The time change does affect collisions. As you know, it gets dark out, and people's time and reception of oncoming vehicles kind of change. People are getting adjusted. Plus, you get the holiday season coming up, so you're getting a lot more folks on the roadway going out there, getting stuff prepared for the holidays, such as Christmas, obviously, this week with Thanksgiving. And obviously, when school is in session, we do see more vehicles on the roadway in the morning, because like I tell you, during COVID, the travel to work was very nice. And now, since school's back in and a lot of restrictions have been lifted since COVID, there's been a lot more folk going to work, a lot more people out and about. And with school back in session, there is an increase of vehicles on the roadway. And we know when we get an increase of vehicles on the roadway, we have a chance of a collision.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman Bryant Ward, do you have a question for Lieutenant Payne?
Not a question, but just a congratulatory message. Great job that you did before the governor and the police association. Thank you for representing us so well, as always.
Oh, I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
And Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I just wanted to express my appreciation for this revised format of the monthly reports. I find that the graphics are very helpful to look at the trends. So I appreciate your work in doing all this, and I'm sure it's a little extra work for you, but I just want to recognize that work and also appreciate this effort because it does likely give us a much better perspective of the stats as we look over time. So thank you for that, and also thank you for starting up again the monthly crime watch meetings. They're also another way for the community to interact with the police, and it's very helpful. Thank you.
And I appreciate it. Like I said, I'll say it's nice to keep everyone informed as well with the crime watch meetings as well, keeping our citizens informed of what's going on in the town.
I love that. It's all about engagement, so thank you for that. All right, any other questions, Council, for Lieutenant Payne? All right, thank you. Next up, any questions for Director Harrington? Councilman Jenkins? Oh, you're muted.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, again. I just wanted to, again, tell Director Harrington, I noticed in one of your comments that you have now initiated a tracking program or a tracking of how we're implementing a comprehensive plan. So I wanted to highlight and recognize that process. I think that's very important to do that. And by the fact that we actually moved forward with the hospital overlay zone, which was in the comp plan, I believe is mentioned by you and or Mr. Scott, that is a process or a a goal that has been implemented in the plan. So I just wanted to recognize that and recognize the fact that you're tracking how we implement the comp plan. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Director Harrington? You're waiting. I see it. I see it. You escaped. No, you did a very good job on your report, very thorough, so thank you very much. No questions.
I just have one point. I don't know if you noticed at the bottom of contacts that Aaron Mazri was just recently promoted to manager of inspections, so I just wanted to throw that in there.
Good. I am so excited for him. That is fantastic. You have a wonderful team down there, so he is going to do you proud, I am sure. All right, thank you very much. And operations for Director Stahl. Does anybody have any questions, comments for Director Stahl? All right, I have one. I loved your idea of doing some type of engagement again to let people know that they need to have their water meters changed out. The neon colored inserts are a great idea that catches people's eye. And another letter, I think that gets, I think people see it, I don't even think they open it half the time on that, since they know what it says, or they think they know what it says. And social media, I have no problem whatsoever getting out there, and you want me to say something about the water meters, most definitely I will. So those are great ideas, and we just have to make sure that we get that word out.
Mayor, one of the things that I'd like to ask is, and one of the things we've been talking about was whether or not you would consider putting out a Christmas message, maybe, and remind people right around Christmas time that if they would, to be sure to make an appointment right after the new year. Because I think if we did it today, it's probably a little bit early. But I think a little bit later in December, as we get closer to the January timeframe, it might be nice to, maybe we could post a short media presentation, maybe wishing everyone a Merry Christmas, but also reminding them of the importance to set up a time to have their meter upgraded.
Definitely. Thank you. I will look at how to do that, for sure. Councilman Trolinger.
Yes, Director Stahl, I wanted to kind of offer a Councilman Jenkins-like comment as to the graphics are helpful, but I thought the before and after photos on some of the projects were really helpful. You know, sometimes what you guys do is hard to comprehend just hearing it orally, but to see it, it really gives us a great appreciation for the hard work that your team does. So I think where we can see it, you know, keep documenting it. It's very helpful. Thank you for your work.
Okay. Might I also point out, today, we did complete the paving for this year. The paving company had pulled out for about a week, but they did come back today, and we did finish Calmia Court. So if anyone has a chance, I know all of the council members had been over there and walked that. We did, of course, finish up the concrete work, but today they completed all of the paving over there, and I think Calmia, with sprucing up some of the paint on the curbs, paving over there, and I think Calmia, with sprucing up some of the paint on the curbs, and with now the new paving that was completed today, I think it really has added a very nice feel to the community over there, that we're actually not ignoring them and putting work into the community. So both Calmia and Cedar Court were all paved today, and I think it looks very nice.
Thank you for that. Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Stahl. On slide 10, you have a comparison, which I think is great, the comparison of water and sewer flow from '06 to 2020. So I think that's great to give us a perspective of, you know, how it rolls out over the years. Is there any particular explanation of why the water may have dropped off a little bit in, I guess I'm trying to read it, in 2020? Or 2021? Or is that just conservation or what?
You have to remember that in 2020, we've had some drier years than what we, if you remember, 2018 was a very wet year. Some of the other things that I think have consistently worked on water use, if you might remember, Councilman, probably during some of your tenure with the town staff, we implemented a tiered billing system. And so when we entered the tiered billing system, people are much more aware of high water consumption, and so water consumption has gone down. I think some of the interesting part of that is when you look at water use on an annualized basis. It was hard to argue with MDE about needing the additional appropriation, because when you looked at that 15-year span, our average daily use was basically flat, and we did not gain in water consumption. I don't think we will consistently see that over the next 15 years. I believe we will certainly grow. But I wanted to kind of, in publishing those numbers, and I said to you that I would at the last meeting, I wanted to show that really, you know, with the increase in population, which has gone up about 1,500 residents over the last 15 years, so we've gone up about 100 per year, you know, water consumption has remained very flat, and sewer treatment has actually remained fairly flat as well. So both of those are very positive things from an environmental perspective, but I think they're also, you know, won't continue in the future. I think we are going to be a growing town, and we will certainly need more water and more capacity in the wastewater treatment plant as we go forward. But I do, I did believe in looking at those numbers, as I said, I would publish those to you. Those are very, very interesting numbers, and I think are, you know, certainly putting things in perspective as we move forward.
Yeah, I would certainly agree with that. And then just one final, I guess, question, and I'm going to say this wrong, but what is the status of the Smart Water or vendor?
Water Smart? We met with them.
Say, I knew I'd get it wrong. I knew I had it backwards. Okay.
We met with them today on a data transfer meeting. We have our kickoff meeting with them next Monday. So we do have a kickoff meeting with them to kick off the implementation for that, and we hope to, over the next month, prior to when MyNet actually is finalized, to have the beginning of Water Smart and the Water Smart technology in place. So our goal is to start implementing that throughout the month of December, and hopefully we can work towards implementing that customer service portal of the Water Smart technology somewhere around the first of the year.
Thank you. Again, I'm sure this, maybe I said it before, but I think it bears repeating that I've had a number of residents where I live were highly appreciative of that portal, and so they were a little bit dismayed when we had the problems we're having. And then I did try to go back and explain this new system, so the fact that we've done this, or you've done it, your staff's done it, and we're moving toward implementation, it certainly is a welcome service and customer service, because I know a lot of folks, at least in the area where I live, actually are very aware of their water usage, and they have, in fact, one particular individual said that he used it and he realized he had a leak. So that helped him save a lot of money. And actually, several years ago, it helped me save a lot of money because I didn't know it had a leak. So I just wanted to get an update, and again, it's very appreciative of this effort to get this thing in place, to help the, our consumers really know how they use water. Thank you.
And I would just point out, Councilman, the more I've looked at it, I think it is actually, Water Smart and the Water Smart technology, I think, will actually be a much better public portal than actually what MyNet is. So I think once we get it fully implemented, I think it will be better and provide better information to our residents.
That's good to hear that, and I'm sure we look forward to that system being in place shortly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Stahl. Mr. Manuel, did I miss the treasurer's report? I think it was emailed to us. It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, it was not published. Kevin is available.
Okay, do we have, council, were you able to look at that? I see a yes. Yes. Do you have any questions for Mr. Greenville, or if he wants to give a quick, this is what happened, since it's not attached to this?
Yeah, I will say we remind you that he's here every day, so if you have questions, you can also call him.
Right, right. Councilman Jenkins, do you have a specific question for Mr. Greenville?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe there was, I believe in the storm, we're a man, but that there's currently a deficit, and I know that's an enterprise fund, but I'm just, from my own education. So how does that play out for the rest of the fiscal year?
Sure. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. Councilman Jenkins, we've done significant work with stormwater infrastructure so far this year, and we, our budget for the current fiscal year included some appropriation of our fund balance in the stormwater, stormwater fund to cover the, you know, the repairs that we need. So yes, there is a deficit in there, but we, within the budget report, we have not allocated any money from our fund balance to cover those costs yet, but we will do that, you know, depending at the end of the year where we stand. And as well, we've only recorded one quarter of revenue as well so far. So once December 31 rolls around, we'll get out the new bills, and another quarter of revenue will come in. There's always sort of a lag in the enterprise funds, because we record revenue every quarter. So right now, you're seeing October, we have October expenditures, but we haven't captured that October revenue until we get the bills out on December 31st.
Yeah, I know there's been a significant amount of work, repair work that the town had to do, so that's certainly understandable. So I'm glad that there's a process in place that we can maintain control over those expenses. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Greenville. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is 4.3, proclamation for Shop La Plata on Small Business Saturday, which is coming up on November 27th, this Saturday. I will quickly read this. Whereas the Council of the Town of La Plata celebrates its local small businesses and the contributions that they make to our local economy and community, and whereas the resources from local businesses help support law enforcement, utilities, special events, parks, and other valued municipal services, and whereas commercial property accounts for over 20% of the property taxes paid to the town, and whereas wherever local business, whichever local business you support, the owners and employees of the business often live right in our community, and whereas, according to the Small Business Association Administration, there are currently more than 500,000 small businesses in the state of Maryland employing more than half the state's private workforce, and whereas advocacy groups and public and private organizations in small towns across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, and whereas one of the Town of La Plata's best qualities is its unique array of locally owned and operated independent small businesses, which are part of the tradition and heritage of the community. Local small business owners are committed to the Town of La Plata, contribute to the local economy, offer quality jobs for residents, engage in civic concerns, and are essential to our success. And whereas, support of these small businesses is critical to maintaining and revitalizing the downtown area of La Plata, economic development and growth, and the quality of life and sustainability, and whereas the Town values new small businesses who open shops and restaurants in the Town of La Plata, and celebrates the diversity of groups and services they bring to our community. And now, therefore, we, the Council of the Town of La Plata, designate this Saturday, November 27th, as Small Business Saturday for the Town of La Plata, and encourage all residents and visitors to attend Shop La Plata celebrations on Small Business Saturday, and continue to support locally owned small businesses throughout the year, because everyone can play a part in strengthening our local economy and revitalizing the downtown area of La Plata. So I encourage everyone to shop small on Saturday. With that said, brings us to our next item on the agenda, which is Resolution 21-38, the trash and recycling containers. Mr. Manuel?
Yes, Madam Mayor, as you stated, it's a resolution concerning trash and recycling container purchase for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract purchase agreement for the purchase of 538 trash and recycling carts of varying sizes.
Fantastic. All right. So do I have a motion to accept Resolution 21-38 as presented?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to accept Resolution 21-38 as presented.
And do I have a second? All right, we have a second times two, so whoever gets it on the record. So any, any discussion? All right, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to new business, our commission reports. Start off with Councilman Goldsmith.
Yes, we did have a DRB meeting this month. Big Titles was basically signage, and there were several areas, Chesapeake Street, which is where the Lidos is located at, had a new sign planned, just to kind of update their sign out front. The SDM Potomac Square, that was on the Exxon sign, and it's pretty much the same thing, it just reversed where the prices are, from one side to the other. And then the old BB&amp;T Bank is now the Truitt, and then changing the sign, I'll say that. The Charles Market, I wanted to have the sign out in front of where the new market part of the building is located at. That was approved as well. On Kent Avenue, the Crime Lab, wanted to have a shed, and a very small, I think it was five by six, something about nature. That was approved. And then on Cowers Square, the church across from the Rescue Squad, which is the Plater Church of Christ, updating that sign to make it more prominent and color green. And then the Panda Express going in where the old Sonic is located at, their signage for their corporation as well. Then the hospital zone, the new sign plan for the hospital zone accordingly. The DRB did do a, Harrington presented that scope and process to allow more administrative processing for the staff to approve. And basically, I think if I recall correctly, she said six out of the seven sign requests that were presented at that meeting could have been done administratively, thereby saving a lot of time on the business part as well as the DRB itself. And I think it was positively received by the DRB to go to the administrative processing as well. Director Harrington, if I misprovided anything, please let me know.
Nope, you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Goldsmith. Councilman Trolinger?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did not have a beautification meeting, but if any of you have had the opportunity to go over to Town Hall lately, you'll see that two of our commission members did a fantastic job decorating Town Hall, so I wanted to give a shout out to Rose and Rose Goldsmith and Ms. Norris as well, Judy Norris, for decorating, taking time out of their schedule to make sure our town looks festive for the holidays.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Pretty much everything that went before the planning commission has come before us, so the only thing that I would like to bring forward tonight is, we do have an alternate member who has applied for the planning commission, Greg Sampson. We interviewed him last Friday, I believe. The interview went very well. Chairman Gann wanted me to bring him before the town council for approval. He is a military vet as well, worked for, currently works for the government, moved to La Plata recently, maybe six, seven months ago. Very excited about being involved in his community, and he presented very well during the interview.
And are you recommending that someone make, so you can actually make the motion?
I want Matt to do it.
Okay, I do too.
Yeah, well, I got to give the people what they want, I suppose, so. I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion at this time to recommend Mr. Gregory Sampson, is that his?
That's Rick.
Mr. Gregory Sampson to join the committee. Be approved for the committee.
You did, you did marvelously.
No, thank you.
All right, do I, do I have a second?
I'll suck it a little more.
Normal second.
All right, good, good. Any discussion? And he will be an alternate, correct? And in?
We are currently, we will currently have a full planning commission. The last one has already completed her training, she's gone through everything, she's enthusiastic. I am so excited. We will have a full planning commission right now.
Wonderful. So I have a motion that was just so eloquently stated, and a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, for bringing that to our attention. Councilman Jenkins, your commission report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me be very transparent, the Planning and Recreation Committee, I mean, the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting virtually on November 10th, unfortunately, I was not in attendance, I was in transit to a different part of the world than me, Florida. And so Ms. Minor, thank her for sharing the meeting and providing some notes from that meeting. Two items of importance. The commission received an application to update a slat on an existing bench at Tillman Lake, and there are guidelines, so this request cannot be approved until the January meeting of the Parks Commission, and so therefore, that'll be an upcoming item when we meet in January. And then the second item that they discussed was the Town's Comprehensive Park and Recreation Master Plan was also, or will be put on the agenda for review by the commission, as we anticipate the next budget cycle starting in January. I assume they're going to go through the plan to see what capital projects may, could or may be included in the capital improvement budget for next year. So they'll be talking about that at their next commission meeting. So again, thanks to Ms. Minor for filling in and taking those notes. Also, the, we had a virtual meeting of the La Plata Town Center Corporation on November the 8th to discuss the work session that we had with the council. I will, rather than go through it tonight, I will forward a summary of those meeting notes to the town council members for further discussion. But there was some discussion that they are seeking some additional guidance, because they're not really sure what their role is, per se. They had some, again, some additional questions about the library process and where the site plan is. I indicated that I would try to find out where that is, knowing that there's some, that those plans are still under negotiation, are still under work between the county and the town staff, so. So that, that's a due date, that's a due from me back to them, but I just wanted to bring that forward. And like I said, I will share the minute, the meeting note summary with the council. I'll probably send that out to you tonight or tomorrow morning. But don't read it during, don't read it during Thanksgiving, huh? Don't read it during Thanksgiving.
Well, could you also update us on the Arts and Entertainment District walk?
Well, okay, I didn't want, I didn't want to take your thunder, so I, I held off talking about that. Through a very good collective effort, as the council may and may know, the, the town had, I probably might get this wrong, but they had submitted a, an intent application to file for a Arts and Entertainment District or the Maryland State's Arts Council, which is part of the Maryland Department of Commerce. I think that was submitted probably last, I guess, last spring, Mayor. And so, so that was submitted. So the, the advisory committee from the Arts Council that reviews these, these submissions came down to the town last Friday. Thank God it didn't rain. And we had lunch sponsored by Apple Spice Junction. And then we did a walking tour of the town to highlight the various artistic and other venues in the town that could, could, could comprise a Arts and Entertainment District. That was a couple hours and we had, I mean, just terrific venues to look at. In fact, some of the members actually bought items from, from our local business, 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 businesses here in town. We then went back and kind of had like, kind of another finalized work session to talk about what the next steps are. As I understand it, Mayor, and correct me, they will open up the portal so we can then begin to fill out a, a full application for designation. But there's a lot of work that we need to come up with. Specifically, they're looking for us to develop a strategic plan on how we would operate this district. They, at least my sense was, Mayor, they were, they were very impressed with the assets we have in town. They were very impressed by the business community engagement in the downtown. So I, I, and so I think now what they, what they are looking for us to do is provide them our plan on how we're going to run it. And there is a lot of work to get this ready and also a lot of work to, to actually run the A and E district if we were to have one in town. I, I have gone back and looked at the, the Maryland Arts, State Arts Council has a website and they have, you can go access other A and E districts throughout Maryland. And there is one in, in Leonardtown. So I've, I've looked at that. I've looked at one in Cambridge and some other places of similar sizes to us. So there are some examples that perhaps we can reach out and take their best practices. So I, I was very encouraged by their, the fact that they came down and spent the day with us and I was very appreciative of their comments, very direct but very useful comments for us to move forward. And, and again, and, and I want to thank the mayor and Kelly and her folks and her for really putting that package together and then organizing this, this walk, walk around. It, it can, and I believe has a lot of potential for La Plata and the business community and our residents.
It does. And it's the arts, arts group, which Shannon Wayne did an amazing job, Craig, Kelly. And what they will be doing is they will be, I believe Shannon is going to present to the council so that all members of the council can hear the benefits of an Arts and Entertainment District, the work ahead of us. And that way you can ask the questions, what, how will the town benefit? And that's a huge thing. So thank you for that, that recap. And I might have been one that purchased items as well, so. They were good. But thank you very much for that. My upcoming event, of course, on Thursday is Thanksgiving. So to my council, staff and to all the residents, happy, happy Thanksgiving. Be safe, enjoy your family, enjoy just being thankful for all that we have and moving forward with that. So my wishes are with you on Saturday. I hope to see everyone out there shopping for Shop Small Saturday. You can still contribute to the toy for tots that they have. And then the lighting of our Christmas tree, which will be on December 5th. We have our Old Time Holiday Event that will be from, I think it's three to six. And then we will light the, the tree at the end. So we've got a lot of great things happening here in La Plata. I thank you all so much for a great meeting. We streamlined it a little bit, but we are even going to streamline it more, guys. We're going to get it a little bit closer. Mr. Manuel, before we ask for an adjournment, you have something?
I apologize when you made the question about the treasures report not being on the agenda. We will get that posted and update the agenda so that anyone from the public that's interested will have access to that. It was just came in late and so we did not want to keep republishing the agenda.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right.
All right. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Thank you, Councilwoman Goldsmith. Do I have a second, Councilman Chollinger?
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Have a great night, safe travels, happy Thanksgiving.
Everybody have a great Thanksgiving and thanks for all the work, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone.